Good evening. This is the May 7, 2025, meeting of the Planning Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is an extension of preliminary approval for Map of Gyrodine LLC in St. James, and we have it up posting. The applicant requests an extension of conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision number 1178, Map of Gyrodine LLC. The subdivision number 1178, Map of Gyrodine LLC, received conditional preliminary approval from the Planning Board on March 30, 2022. Conditional preliminary approval expired on March 30, 2025. The applicant submitted a request for a sixth extension on March 18, 2025. The extension request is to allow the applicant to continue to work through the Suffolk County Sewer Agency and county subdivision process. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension period of six months. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Timothy Shea to extend the conditional preliminary approval subdivision number 1178, Map of Gyrodine LLC, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a six-month extension of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision number 1178, Map of Gyrodine LLC, to expire on September 30, 2025.
Mr. Shea?
J. Timothy Shea, Jr., Sir Tillman Ballin, 100 Motor Parkway Hopog, New York, for the applicant. I agree with everything that Mr. Colado just said, and I'm not getting paid by the word. I have nothing left to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any questions from the board? Okay, then, as in the past, Mr. Ryan will be accusing himself on this matter. In the matter of number 1178, Map of Gyrodine LLC, a move that will be closed to hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's four ayes and one abstention by Mr. Ryan. The hearing is closed. In the matter of number 1178, extension of conditional preliminary approval, Map of Gyrodine LLC, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan is abstaining. That's four ayes and one abstention by Mr. Ryan. The motion is adopted.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
The next item is an extension of conditional final approval for number 1181, Map of Gemini Landing 2 in Fort Solongo. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1181, Map of Gemini Landing 2. The subdivision number 1181, Map of Gemini Landing 2, received conditional final approval for a two-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on September 2, 2020. Conditional final approval expired on February 8, 2025. The applicant submitted a request for an eighth extension on February 6, 2025. The applicant requires additional time in order to file the subdivision in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension period of 180 days. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number 1181, Map of Gemini Landing 2, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a 180-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number 1181, Map of Gemini Landing 2, to expire on August 7, 2025.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I ask the board to follow the recommendation of the Planning Department. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any questions from the board? Okay, then, in the matter of number 1181, Map of Gemini Landing 2, a move that will be closed to hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is closed. In the matter of extension of conditional final approval, number 1181, Map of Gemini Landing 2, a move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted.
Thank you.
The next item is a final subdivision for number 1194, Map of Cox Trucking LLC in Fort Solongo. The applicant requests final approval to subdivide a 2.81-acre parcel into two single-family lots. The subdivision number 1194, Map of Cox Trucking LLC, is one tax lot, 2.81 acres in size. The property is located in R-43 zoning district and is surrounded by R-43 zoning and single-family dwellings. On Lot 1, there is an existing single-family dwelling and several accessory structures, including a two-story cottage. A new single-family dwelling is proposed on Lot 2. Access to both lots will be provided by a private road off of Meadow Glen Road. The topography of the site ranges from 115 feet to 150 feet above sea level, and there are steep slopes located throughout the property. The depth of groundwater is greater than 10 feet, and no problems are anticipated with respect to surface water features. The proposed subdivision complies with the R-43 dimensional regulations with respect to minimum lot area, lot frontage, road frontage, and setbacks. The Board of Zoning Appeals granted variances to legalize several accessory structures on Lot 1, including the two-story cottage, and permit environmentally sensitive land, slopes, and excess of 15% to be altered on Lot 2 for the existing driveway. The Board of Zoning Appeals require the applicant file covenants and restrictions on the property stating that the two-story cottage shall not be habitable, and that no plumbing other than one slop sink located on the first floor shall be permitted. A copy of the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision letter is enclosed for the Planning Board. 24 of the subdivision regulations states that each subdivision is required to show a park area of at least two acres per 100 buildings. However, the Court of Appeals has ruled that the town cannot require the reservation of park area unless the Planning Board determines on a case-by-case basis that the need for parkland exists with respect to the individual subdivision. Based on the community facility study in the town's comprehensive plan, there is a need for parkland in the neighborhood in which the subdivision is situated. The subdivision's share of meeting the need is approximately 0.006 acres. In cases where the Planning Board determines that a suitable park cannot be located or is otherwise not practical, the subdivider is required to pay cash equivalent prior to filing the map. Given the location and small size of the subdivision, a dedication for park space would not be practical. Therefore, the payment of equivalent park fee established at $5,000 is recommended as a condition of final plat approval. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have found the subdivision acceptable. The Department of Environment and Waterways finds the tree preservation and land clearing plan acceptable. They recommend a SECRE negative declaration, as well as conditions related to land clearing and site preparation work. Additional information. One, letters assuring availability of utility service have been received from the Suffolk County Water Authority and PSEG Long Island. Two, the Kings Park Central School District has acknowledged the subdivision. Three, the amount of the inspection fee is estimated at $1,291. Four, the amount of the park fee is $5,000. Five, the amount of the performance bond is estimated at $16,140. Six, the amount of the cash deposit is $1,000. And seven, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town is $15,140. Following resolution is recommended for number 1194, Map of Cox Trucking LLC, from the Department of Environment and Waterways. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the SECRE recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, issue a SECRE negative declaration determination of nonsignificance, and EIS is not necessary in the matter of application for subdivision approval by Cox Trucking LLC for number 1194, Map of Cox Trucking LLC, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not involve the destruction or physical modification of any unique or highly valuable or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the environmental conservation law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to contain any high groundwater conditions, poor soil properties, or unmanageable slopes, which would impose severe environmental development constraints upon the subject parcel. C, although the subject parcel is located in hydro-geological zone 1, an adverse impact upon groundwater quality is not anticipated, as this project will be subject to Suffolk County Sanitary Code Article 6, under which the Suffolk County Department of Health Services maintains jurisdiction over final use, lot area, and design and location of sewage disposal and water supply systems. The condition imposed on this parcel by the Smithtown Board of Zoning Appeals further protects groundwater by prohibiting residential use for the existing cottage. D, the nature of the proposal mitigates against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. E, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the subject parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. F, while the proposed subdivision location is in the vicinity of bats listed as endangered or threatened by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, protection of bats will occur since the applicant has submitted a letter indicating that he is aware of the restrictions on construction activities that must be adhered to in order to protect the bats and that he will comply with them. G, the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by William Joseph Lottie, licensed professional engineer, and dated July 23, 2024, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Cox Trucking LLC to subdivide a 2.81-acre parcel into two single-family lots, now therefore be it first resolved that the final plat, number 1194, Map of Cox Trucking LLC, is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions. A, posting of a performance bond in form and amount specified by a separate resolution of the Planning Board and for a term of two years. B, posting of a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond and in accordance with the provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown subdivision regulations. C, payment of an inspection fee and cash deposit as established by a separate resolution of the Planning Board. D, a check print of the final plat shall be submitted to the Planning Department for review before the mylar's are prepared. E, payment of a park fee of $5,000. F, final approval of the drainage and regrading plans to the satisfaction of the town engineer. G, the covenants and restrictions required by the Board of Zoning Appeals for case number 19200 shall be filed with the county clerk's office prior to filing the subdivision map. H, prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing or other site preparation work, the applicant shall abide by the following conditions. One, all limits of clearing and any individual trees to be preserved within the clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk of any tree to be preserved than the drip line of the tree. This area to be preserved shall be as indicated on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by William Joseph Lottie, licensed professional engineer, and dated July 23, 2024. Two, upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of the limits of clearing as marked in the field by the sighted fencing. Three, the applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work, until the marked limits of clearing are approved in writing by the Environmental Protection Director. And four, the snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. Second resolved that the chairman of the Planning Board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the town board has accepted a performance bond of satisfactory form and amount. Third resolved that the conditional final approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution, and within 62 days after the chairman of the Planning Board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the applicant in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. And the final resolution, which is the performance bond, whereas the town departments of engineering, traffic safety, highway, and planning have prepared a performance bond estimate to cover the cost of all required public improvements, now therefore be it first resolved that the chairman of the Planning Board is authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for number 1194, Map of Cox Trucking LLC, in the amount of $16,140, and establish an inspection fee of $1,291 and a cash deposit of $1,000. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town should be $15,140.
Thank you, Mr. Colado. Okay, is the affidavit of posting in order? The affidavit of posting?
Yep, he's bringing it up.
It's good? Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Fox, 152 Highland Drive, Kings Park, New York. I'm the agent working with Daniel Cox on this project. We agree with all the conditions of the resolution, and will comply with everything noted in the resolution. We have one small request. We'd like to just put a small name change of the map, since it was originally applied as Cox Trucking. We'd like to just change it to a Map of Cox Estates. Just lose the word "trucking."
Yeah, so that's... We're fine with that. Yeah, so just...
Going forward...
So just moving forward, we'll refer to it as Cox...
And if I do any of the final...
Cox Estates, right.
Cox Estates. Any of the final maps, we'll note that in all the new maps coming forth for the signatures. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Are there any questions from the board on this matter? I think I will do this as of tonight. Going forward, as of tonight, we will have the name... The new name of the matter will be number 1194, Map of Cox Estates, and I will use that now. In the matter of number 1194, Map of Cox Estates, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is closed. Okay? In the matter of number 1194, Map of Cox Estates, recommended SECRE declaration, I move that we adopt the recommended SECRE negative declaration.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted. Okay, then, in the matter of subdivision final approval for number 1194, Map of Cox Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted. And, in the matter of authorization to sign performance bond estimate, in the matter of number 1194, Map of Cox Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted.
Just remind me, you got to sign the bonds after the meeting. The next item is a waiver amendment request for 591 Planned Industrial Park in Comac. That's for the property 57 Mall Drive. The applicant requests to reduce the 100-foot buffer in the rear yard of 57 Mall Drive from 100 feet to 70 feet. This matter was first heard by the Planning Board on August 7, 2024. The Planning Department read into the record a report dated August 6, 2024, which listed several comments and concerns for the board and the applicant to consider before rendering their decision. Subsequently, the matter was adjourned several times to allow the applicant the opportunity to address the comments and concerns. At their March 5, 2025, meeting, the Planning Board indicated they would grant the applicant one more adjournment. As of this date, the comments have not been addressed. The Planning Department recommends the board deny the request. This decision will not prejudice any future applications that addresses the Planning Department's comments concerning the site. The following resolution is offered for the board's consideration. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to amend the filed map, number 591 Planned Industrial Park, to reduce the 100-foot buffer in the rear yard of 57 Mall Drive from 100 feet to 70 feet, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request to amend the filed map, number 591 Planned Industrial Park, to reduce the 100-foot buffer in the rear yard of 57 Mall Drive from 100 feet to 70 feet for the following reasons. One, there are potential negative impacts to the residential properties west of the site. The loss of vegetated buffer exposes the industrial site to the residential properties to the west, especially with the loss of foliage in the winter months. Two, it appears that truck activity is moving closer to the residents, including the noise associated with truck refrigeration. Three, no mitigation measures are proposed, such as a noise wall, fencing, or planting screen. Four, reduction of the required buffer may set a precedent with the other businesses and may result in the loss of buffers on other sites around the perimeter of the industrial park. Five, it appears the site can be used and developed in compliance with the required 100-foot buffer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. We've submitted the affidavit of posting to Mr. Colado. This has been on and adjourned many times, and one of the big issues that we have, when a commercial property adjoins residential properties and the town requires a buffer, more often than not, intentionally or unintentionally, residents who live on the other side of the so-called buffer encroach into the buffer area. In this case, we have that situation three or four times with different people who live on the adjoining street. So our first problem was, and we had a meeting a long time ago with the Planning Department, and their concern was, well, you got to get these people out because they're violating the buffer area. Well, we tried to do that. My client visited these people. I wrote them letters, and what I got back was letters from their attorneys basically saying, we really don't want to move our, I think, a swimming pool, a shed, a couple of other structures, a fence. We would really like to stay there. Is there any way that we could work this out? And I'm giving you this history because it really is kind of a conundrum that our client suffers. So my client said, yeah, okay, I can work it out with you, and I can let you stay there, provided you provide certain insurances, holding us harmless, and various other liability issues that we would cover. So it appears, from at least the two lawyers that I did speak to, who called me, that they're willing to do that. So I guess the first issue is these residents encroaching into the buffer. The second part of this issue becomes our encroaching into the buffer. I think at the maximum, it's 30 feet, and it kind of comes on an angle, and Mike Morbillo, our architect, will get into that with a little more depth and hopefully more clarity than I'm able to give you. It appears... The second statement by the Planning Department is, it appears that activity is moving closer to the residents, including the noise associated. Well, I don't think the residents are going to complain if we can make a so-called agreement with them. I don't know that they would want to complain about the noise from the trucks, and that would be part of, hopefully, an agreement with them. The third thing is, no mitigation measures are proposed, such as a noise wall fence and planting, and Mike Morbillo will get into that and talk about that a little bit. And then, Planning Department says the required buffer may set a precedent with other businesses and may result in the loss of buffers on other sites. That may be true, but I'm telling you right now, if you took an aerial photo of all the buffers in the industrial park, I'll bet you that 50% of the people are encroaching. It's just a natural thing. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but this is what's happening. The... The final thing that Planning gets into is, it appears the site plan can be used and developed in compliance with the 100-foot buffer. It can't. If we're not permitted to go into the buffer from our side from the maximum of 30 feet, then we just can't do what we do, and that's a Boarshead Provision Trucking Station. There were many trucks there. I don't know exactly how many, maybe Mike does, and they're all parked against the buffer. One of the complaints that the residents had was the noise, and we've told our client, and he's agreed to reverse the trucks, so the refrigeration units that are usually right over the cab of the truck will be further away, and the back of the truck will be backing up to the buffer. One of the things that's also happening in Smithtown, and you might have heard this many times before, but a lot of buildings are vacant in the industrial park. If we're not granted some relief here, the chances are that my client would have to move out and go to a larger place, whether it's in New York or some other... I think they're talking more about another state. Again, it's not a threat, it's just a fact. We're losing businesses left and right, and I think that an accommodation should be made in certain cases. When you think about it, in this particular case, and Mike will explain it, there is a buffer behind our buffer, and it's the Lipa. Used to be the Loco buffer, now it's the Lipa buffer. So with that, I'd ask Mike to come up and go into some of the mitigation ideas that he has. And just a final note, as smart and as good and as acute that the Planning Department is, they don't know trucking, they don't know how trucks have to turn around, and that's why we have Mike Morbillo and his discussion with our client to help us try and convince the board to save this company and keep it in Smithtown. Mike?
Good evening. My name is Michael Morbillo, architect. My firm is N. Spire Design Group. My office is located at 273 Lake Avenue, St. James, New York. Sure. So to touch on some of the points that Mr. Tramarko was making, we have a site that has a required buffer, which is very common in the industrial park, especially when it's up against, in certain areas, it park up against residential homes. Unfortunately, going back to when this site was established and developed, the records show that there's been encroachments since the creation of this lot, and the residents... And we've examined, even the original site plan showed that there was encroachments, and the residents were supposed to remove at that time, going back, I guess, to the '80s, I think, is when the original site plan was filed. So this is something that's been ongoing for a long period of time, and I think that the residents are probably accustomed to this business being there for all these years, or at least the commercial and industrial operation of a business. What's been exacerbated is that we have a circumstance where they've cut into this natural buffer, they're using it for their own purposes, and it's my client's private property, but it's part of a required buffer. And the numbers that Mr. Tramarko was stating was that we're actually between 12 to 18 feet of encroachment on our side of the buffer, where the parking lot is, where the truck parking is. So they add up to 30 feet, but it goes from as little as about 12 feet to as much as about 18 feet. And a lot of that was done primarily to... And a lot of that was done primarily to set up, you know, charging stations to basically keep the trucks warm and charged for operation, and so there's a lot of infrastructure which has been built on the west side of the property. So there's all of these stations that are set up. Right now, it's set up for between 12 to 13 vehicles, and it's at a great cost, electrical costs and other things, that those improvements were made so that this business could be successful. The applicant does want to remain in this location, and they're looking at making some improvements on the property relative to loading ramp and potentially squaring off the building for a small addition. So, you know, they're doing these things to be able to keep their business successful and to be able to have proper access for loading, and so that's why they're looking at trying to maintain what they've had, something that has been there for a long period of time. Some of this being addressed, again, is these encroachments, again, going back many decades. But we realize that we're trying to take not a great situation and bring it together. We didn't, we discussed mitigation measures, but we haven't proposed them yet because, quite frankly, the lawyers had to do their work. They had to go and approach these homeowners who were illegally using my client's property, and they had to send letters, and they had to wait for responses, and then they had to have, as Mr. Tramarko said, come back with counsel and discuss these things and see what they were willing to consider before we could even propose something. But, you know, quite clearly, I think, at a minimum, we would be proposing, you know, dense evergreen landscaping, potentially a sound wall in conformance with what the planning department would want to see, but something that would stop any noise pollution from the industrial activities going into this sort of thinned-out buffer area. So I think that there's certainly measures that we can take and we can design and add in to reduce that, and hopefully, you know, the owners that are there don't even, barely even realize that there is, you know, an industrial facility right behind them, or trucking facility right behind them. But those are things that we can add, and right now, it's just general, it's kind of a woods that's there, the woods thin out in the wintertime, there's, I think it's mostly deciduous trees, I think there's a mix of some evergreen trees, but we would be proposing a dense evergreen buffer. We certainly want whatever we do propose to be hardy and something that's not going to die off over time, so we would examine with a, you know, a licensed landscape architect, like, what species are going to survive there along the edge of the woods. We know that we have good exposure on the east side as far as sunlight, but then on the other side of the property, where the residential lots are presently using, we'd want to examine that. We want to be able to make sure that we're reinforcing that buffer, too, and we'd have to examine each property. There's a few properties, three or four properties that are there that are going to be affected, and we have to work out with them where those improvements would be up against their properties or where their improvements are. So it is something that I would say would be a comprehensive plan, but primarily, I think the big request is we're looking to reduce that 100-foot buffer down to 82 feet is what we're looking at, because it's up to an 18-foot reduction that's on the north side of the property, I'm sorry, 18.7-foot reduction, and then we'd look to overdensify and improve that what was, what is a natural buffer, and we can design it to really increase the potential there. As a matter of precedent and other things, I can't address that. That's for Mr. Tramarko and the planning staff to determine and your board's discretion to consider, but I do agree with Mr. Tramarko. It's a well-established business, and, you know, we want them in the area, we need our coal cuts and everything else, and we'd like them to remain, so, and we'd like to keep it as a successful business and also be respectful from a design standpoint of the neighbors that are to the west, and if we can work out an agreement with them and something that's amenable to the board, we would design in such a way. I just want to make sure I haven't missed anything else.
How's the Loco buffer? Where is that?
The, you're talking, the buffer up against?
We should address the board.
Sure, sure. Okay. The, we have two, oh, I'm sorry, Loco buffer. He's using Loco, I'm thinking LIPA and other stuff, my bad. So, yeah, the Loco buffer is the portion of the property, and let me just grab my site plan for a second.
Look behind you.
Oh, thank you. There, too. All right. So the part, the 50 feet that's closest to the neighbors is like a, is an easement for Loco. So if you take a, it runs all along the park, that edge of the park, and you can see from sort of a master plan view or aerial how it connects in with LIPA-owned properties, and it's there, as far as I know, and Peter may be able to address this a little bit better, I believe it's an unused easement, but, you know, it's something that was put in place, so if they ever had any future plans to develop through there, it would be there for their usage, but as far as I know, it's unused. And that also happens to be the area where the adjacent neighbors are encroaching into, primarily, is into that, into that LIPA buffer. I don't know all the terms of the LIPA-Loco buffer as far as what their ability is to clear and do things if they did need to utilize that easement, but I'm sure that could be a factor, and I'm sure, again, Mr. Tramarko would comment on this, that both my client and those neighbors would have to abide by whatever need LIPA or Loco would have for that area. But that's an area that is part of the natural buffer, it's within that 100 feet, but it was something that was very specific to this part of the original subdivision, as far as I know, as for a master plan for LIPA-Loco at the time. Okay.
Thank you.
Let me just, I'm just going to look over my last stuff here. Yeah. Okay, that was it. I think I hit the points. Thank you very much.
That concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you for the board's patience, and again...
I have a question.
Sure.
They're saying it's a 100-foot buffer. You're saying now 82, so we're discussing 18 feet?
Is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. I, there is, in the planning department's recommendation, they're saying 100 feet to 70 feet. That's what, is a little unclear, Mike.
Your request was 70 feet, but if you take into account the neighbors plus your encroachment, the buffer's really like 20 feet now, so your request is not 80 feet, or it's not a 20-foot encroachment, it's 20 feet this way and then 50 feet that way.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
I guess before we proceed...
I think this gentleman has a question.
Yeah.
I have some questions.
Can please come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record, and please spell your name kindly. Thank you.
It's my first time here. My name is Thomas MacTutus, M-A-C-T-U-T-U-S, 23 Country Lane Drive, Kings Park. My question is this, is that hearing this, it seems that swimming pools were built?
I'm sorry?
It seems that swimming pools were built on this, other people's property, on his property. Now, when I had a swimming pool, it had to be inspected. So they got swimming pools that were inspected by the town, I would presume, so the town already approved this encroachment from the other side, and the town should be fully aware of that, and I'm wondering, as taxpayer, they improved their lot by extending it and stealing his land. So did they purchase the land from him? Did they increase the size of their property? Did the town increase their property taxes? What's going on here? They stole the land, I don't care how many decades, the land's stolen, swimming pools are there, had to get permits, otherwise they're illegal.
Actually, and if you look at the overlay that's on the screen, the pools, so that black line, yes, that's the property line, so the pools are not in it. They do have sheds and fences, which, depending on the size and the height, you don't need permits.
Okay. Well, I'll just go with what the gentleman said.
Yeah, there's no pools.
I just find it very weird there'd be swimming pools in, you know.
Yeah, the pools are on their property.
You know, that's all.
It's also with the assumption that they apply for permits. There are pools, sheds, and all sorts of structures around town that don't necessarily have permits.
Well, we're supposed to.
Oh, of course they are.
My neighbors got fined.
Absolutely.
My neighbors got fined, they had to take the sheds down, you know, so, that's all I'm just asking, because it just seemed like it wasn't fair to this gentleman here and his property being stolen, you know, and the fact that there were swimming pools being put on there, because then the town already approved, even with the act of the sheds there and the fact that sheds have to be approved, that the town's already approved an encroachment and already willfully has decided to, by action, by not changing the, you know, making a complaint against these homeowners, has already approved the encroachment from the one side. So therefore, it only stands to reason that the encroachment would only be from his side because the town already approved it on the other side.
If it was approved.
Well, you approved it by letting it exist, and no one gave it a fine.
Unfortunately, many people, it's very hard to go to every single property and police every single property. Unfortunately, there are many people who illegally do these things, and it's under, not, you know, not under, out of our control.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there that it's incongruent to my head, to my thinking, and then, you know, for you all to figure that out, it's not for me. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak on this matter? The board have any questions before I make any comments?
No.
I just, so the 100-foot buffer includes the 50-foot for LIPA?
The 50-foot easement, correct.
Okay. And we're past that, and then we're into the remaining on the other property, as far as the residents?
Exactly. So that's what we're trying to show with the overlay here. The top line shows where the 100-foot buffer would bring you to, that's this. They're looking to encroach or reduce the buffer by about 18 feet. In addition, you can see the neighbors to the west, they all have encroachments of nearly 45 to 50 feet. So what we're saying is, with the reduction, he might be asking for 70 feet, but in actuality, if this is approved, you're left with about a 30-foot buffer. The role of the town is to try to protect the adjacent residents to this, to this industrial park. The properties to the north and to the south appear to have compliant 100-foot buffers.
Yep.
Contrary to all the doom and gloom that Mr. Tramarko was making it out, that everybody was empty, the majority of our site plans are in the industrial park, and there's numerous businesses thriving. We're in support of the, you know, of all the businesses, and we want this business to thrive as well. Why you're here tonight is because neighbors to the west complained about the noise. That's what brought this here. It's been in fourth district court, and we're trying to correct it. So to say that there's no noise, or we're trying to mitigate the noise, well, that's what brought this application here. If they can work something out, that's one thing, but there appears to be an encroachment onto his client's property with structures that should not have permits. We will go verify that. I think we did look at it at the first hearing, and none of the structures had permits because it's not conceivable to me that the building department would issue permits for structures on somebody else's property. I don't know, there should be a buffer fence as well. That's required on the residential boundary. I don't know if that was removed at one time.
And even if anything was done, surveys are submitted anyway, so there would be, on the survey, by the residents, go ahead and submit it if they're going to add a structure or pool or whatever.
And lastly, I think they should contact LIPA, because if this was a drainage easement, we would send you to the highway department to make sure that they have no objection to structures being placed on that property. So you might want to reach out to LIPA and see if there's an objection there. I believe the southern portion is active with the utilities in it. I don't know if it goes this far north, you know, if they ever utilized it for the installation of power lines underground or gas, so, that's our stand. It's the board's role.
If we, you know, if we do deny this tonight, as it states right in the first paragraph, this decision will not prejudice any future application, that they might, if they, if they can get their act together and do whatever they want, you know, they can rethink and invent the wheel, they can come before us again, and if everything's in order...
Yeah, by the time we wrote this, it was before his comments were...
So I guess you could make the argument he did.
Address the comments, whether he addressed them to your liking is up to you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have an idea. I don't know if it's any good or not, but why doesn't the board reserve decision? Look at the maps, chew on it a little bit, maybe, as a suggestion, take a ride there and see what's going on.
I've been there.
I mean, we've waited this long. Oh, you've been there?
Yeah, a couple of times, yeah.
Okay. Well, certainly, it's the board's call, but again, if you go drive around the industrial park, a lot of buildings are empty now, and it's not a threat, it's just a fact, fact alike, that we're losing businesses left and right, so, anyway.
I know one thing, when I was there, I did, it amazed me that all those trucks can even turn around and do that, but they have, there's a small little piece back there, so I understand that they probably need some more room to do all that, but it really, you know, it's pretty tight, pretty tight back there. So, I mean, are we amenable to that, or should we deny this now and then let them come back?
Whatever you want to do.
What do you think? We'll deny it now, and then, Mr. Tramarko, the recommendation is to deny it, and if we vote on that, in that first parag, in the first paragraph, the last sentence says, this decision will not prejudice any future application that addresses the planning department's comments concerning the site. So if we do deny it tonight, you're more than welcome, your client, and get everything together and come back, and we'll look at it again, and we're more than happy to vote on it again at that time, if that's...
Well, I don't like it, but you're the board, so, it's up to the board. Thank you.
Yeah.
I actually have a question about the, you know, dealing with the neighbors and that, okay, and trying to work out some kind of agreement. How would that be enforced? In other words, in the future, new people move in, say, hey, I'm going to pull that pool and that shed out, I don't want to break the rules, and, oh, by the way, okay, we have an agreement with the company, and obviously, the planning board would have, you know, approved these, but for the residents, what guarantee is there for them that they can keep their encroachment or that they can have redress in the future? I get what you're talking about, future residents that move in.
Yeah. It's called a boundary line agreement, and it's filed with the county clerk, so anybody that comes in as a new purchaser will do a title report...
Okay.
...and then know what's there. So that's how, I mean, it wouldn't be a secret, that's for sure.
Okay.
Well...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tramarko. There has a board feel on this.
Deny.
We're going to proceed, and they can come back at any time, which sounds perfect to me, so, okay, then. In a matter of number 591 planned industrial park, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, the hearing is closed. In a matter of amendment of filed map, number 591 planned industrial park, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, the motion is adopted. None, the motion is adopted.
Good evening, Allison Murray with the planning department. What's that? The reason that we are here tonight. Planning board hearing. The planning board to consider comments. On the zone change petition number 2023-02 for Beechwood. Beechwood LLC. For the planning board to consider the comments, I said, in order to make a recommendation to the town board on the zone change. The petitioner is Beechwood LLC, they're located at 200 Robbins Lane in Jericho, New York. The background of this case is that the planning board last heard this matter on December 6th of 2023 and made a recommendation to the town board. To adopt a secret positive declaration, meaning a determination of significance and that an environmental impact statement would be required. At that time, the petitioner was requesting that the same property be rezoned from R21 to R6, which would be for townhouses. The town board subsequently adopted a secret positive declaration at their meeting on January 18th of 2024. After an initial scoping process for the environmental impact statement on September 17th, 2024. The petitioner amended its petition to a change of zone to planned residential development instead of to R6. And they reduced the proposed action from 391 dwelling units to 288 units. As a result of the change, the town board reinitiated the scoping for the environmental impact statement. An amended draft scope was submitted by the petitioner and circulated to involved agencies and was made available for the public to review and comment. The amended final scope was issued in January of 2025, January 10th, 2025. The draft environmental impact statement was later accepted by the town board as complete on February 20th, 2025. Comments on the draft environmental impact statement were accepted until April 4th this year. Subsequently, the town's conservation board reviewed the zone change petition and the draft EIS at its meeting on April 10th, 2025. And its comments, along with all comments received during the public comment period, are required to be addressed in the final environmental impact statement. The petitioner is currently in the process of completing this final environmental impact statement and anticipates submitting the document for the town board to accept later this month. Some information on the site. The subject site is located in the hamlet of Kings Park. It consists of 93 tax parcels owned by three separate property owners and divided into three distinct areas. We're calling those areas the Raleigh Farm area, which is approximately 22 acres. Beechwood Smithtown LLC, which was formerly referred to as KPE2, is approximately 26 acres. And there's a grouping of contiguous small parcels jointly referred to as the Correa Properties, which is approximately 21 acres. I'll note that the Raleigh Farm area, as we have described it, also contains a parcel of land owned by Correa just to the south of it. The Raleigh Farm area consists of a single-family residence, poultry farm, country store, and a separately owned wooded 5.3-acre parcel owned by Correa. The Beechwood Smithtown LLC area was formerly sandmined and contained a precast concrete product business. That property was the subject of a prior zone change, zone change from R21 and light industry to R21. The prior owner had submitted a subdivision application for 36 single-family homes in 2020. That application was withdrawn in January of 2023 when the property was sold to Beechwood Smithtown LLC. The Correa Properties have never been disturbed and contain approximately 22 acres of mature woods. The overall property has road frontage on Lawrence Road, Old Northport Road, Old Road, Linden Avenue, and Old Indian Head Road. The property also contains or is adjacent to an unimproved, to unimproved paper streets. Filed in Section A of the Sixth Map of Tractive Land AC Home Company at Kings Park. They are known as Kings Park Road, Harvard Avenue, Cornell Avenue, Yal Avenue, Princeton Avenue, and Barnard Avenue. Again, those are all paper streets. The majority of the site, it's approximately 55 acres, 77% of the site is undeveloped woodland. There are significant grade changes throughout the site. Some of the slopes are natural and some the results of former sand mining. Approximately six acres are deemed environmentally sensitive in that they are slopes in excess of 15%. The site is split between the Smithtown and Kings Park school districts as well as the Kings Park and Smithtown fire districts. The site does not contain any wetlands or areas with high groundwater. The subject property is identified by New York State DEC as being within occupied habitat of the northern long-eared bat, which is classified by both the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and New York State DEC as an endangered species. Information on the zoning. The subject site is completely zoned R21, which is single-family residential, half-acre minimum per home. The surrounding area is predominantly R21 with some light industry zoning to the east and to the west of the site. There's also a small amount of R43 zoning to the east. The land use, the subject site is predominantly undeveloped woods, but it also includes a poultry farm, single-family residence, and a country store. To the north is state and county-owned open space. To the south is a green belt buffer and single-family residential development. To the east is the DEC Kings Park Unique Area open space, as well as industrial uses, including a former sand mine, transfer station, and landfill. To the west is a single-family residential development. Zoning history on the site. The majority of the site's been zoned single-family residential since the inception of zoning back in 1932. However, a small area in the former KPE2 section was zoned LI in 2019. The town board approved the zone change petition to rezone the KPE2 area from LI and R21 to all R21. The subject petition is to change the zoning of the entire 71.1-acre site from R21 to PRD in order to construct 288 residential condominium units. The units would consist of 53 detached single-family homes, 82 residential flats in 14 buildings, and 153 residential townhouses in 29 separate buildings. The development would also include a 12,500-square-foot clubhouse, onsite sewage treatment plant, recreational amenities, and other miscellaneous facilities. 10% of the units are proposed to be marketed as affordable pursuant to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act and the town's affordable workforce housing policy. The proposed total gross floor area of the buildings is 23.8% of the site. Proposed access to the development is from Old Northport Road as well as. Old Indian Head Road, where the entrance to the poultry farm exists. A total of 1,318 parking spaces would be provided, including ADA-accessible spaces and 71 land bank spaces. Stormwater management systems proposed include cash basins to collect runoff, which would be directed to subsurface leaching pools, stormwater retention depressions, recharge basins, and retention ponds. All wastewater will be directed to an onsite sewage treatment plant with advanced membrane bioreactor wastewater treatment technology. Colloquially referred to as MBR. The petitioner is designing the MBR sewage treatment plant with sufficient capacity to handle sanitary flow from potential development of adjacent properties. The petitioner also proposes to abandon several of the paper streets within the area of development. We'd like to note that the site plan submitted with the petition is conceptual and that in the event this zone change petition is approved. Details to finalize the site design, the grading, drainage, architecture, landscaping, erosion control, limits of clearing, and so forth. Will be reviewed during the subdivision and Board of Site Plan Review phases. Furthermore, the proposed alteration of environmentally sensitive land would require a variance and is subject to approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The number of units is also conceptual and could be reduced or unit types modified during the subdivision review process. For the planning considerations, we'd like the board to note that in 2024, the town of Smithtown adopted an update to the town's comprehensive plan. The plan is the product of a comprehensive analysis of the town's needs, constraints, and trends. The plan recommends the following with respect to the subject site and the adjoining properties, so this is quoted directly from the plan itself. It's also in the memo from the planning department to the board. The comprehensive plan recommends that the town rezone the Raleigh Farm and Jiswali area at the northwest corner of Old Northport Road and Lawrence Road as medium-density residential. The area west of Lawrence Road and east of the paper street Kings Park Road should be developed with medium-density residential development and clustered to preserve the mature woods adjacent to the preserved county and New York State DEC open space parcels. There may be other viable proposals that achieve the goals of the plan, including potential multifamily use on part of the property if it provides a public benefit and is shown to not create significant adverse environmental impacts based on a site-specific secret review. The town should encourage the area to be developed as a single contiguous development. That's the end of the quotation. The purpose of the planned residential development district, as stated in the zoning ordinance, is to enable and encourage flexibility of design and the development of land, which would provide for a diversification of residential housing types and forms of ownership in such a manner. As to promote the most efficient use of land and preserve the natural and scenic amenities of an area. As such, and given this definition, given the size of the, of the subject property. This PRD zoning appears to be an appropriate zone to accomplish the comprehensive plan's recommendation for a contiguous development while also providing for flexibility in layout and in housing type. In addition to determining the most appropriate zoning district itself, it's important that the site be designed in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The planning department has reviewed the proposal and draft environmental impact statement and has submitted comments for the applicant to address with respect to how the proposal advances the recommendations that pertain to clustering development and to the public benefit provided. A full copy of the comments is attached to the planning department's report. For the sake of time, I'm not going to read through each of the comments, but refer the board as well as the public, if they'd like, to a copy of, of the letter. The applicant has not yet submitted a final environmental impact statement for the town board's consideration. As such, and without knowing how the comments and the comments submitted by others will be addressed. The planning department recommends that the planning board postpone issuing its formal recommendation to the town board until such time as the final EIS has been completed. In accordance with chapter, sorry, with Section 239m of New York State General Municipal Law, the town is required to refer this zone change petition to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. The petition has not yet been referred to the planning commission as the town and the planning commission agree that the materials submitted to date do not present the requisite full statement. Of the proposed action, the town and the planning commission have agreed that the petition will be referred once the final environmental impact statement has been accepted by the town board. Therefore, the planning department recommends that the planning board, sorry, the planning department recommends that the planning board close the public hearing. But postpone issuing a recommendation to the town board until such time as the final EIS has been completed.
Thanks, Mr. Murray.
Allison, can I start this, please, and just ask you a quick question? What's the anticipated timeframe on the EIS?
The applicant has indicated to us that I believe they expect to have a completed EIS, or a final EIS submitted by the end of the month.
By the end of this month.
Yeah, the applicant can, can speak to that directly, but that's our understanding.
Okay.
I'm sure the update, everything's in order, so, Mr. Pizzou?
We don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet, right?
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, excuse me, Vincent Pizzou representing Beechwood Smithtown LLC with offices at 200 Robbins Lane in Jericho, New York. At this moment, I'd like to hand up my affidavit of mailing and posting. Before I begin my presentation, I just want to answer that question that just came up. We are preparing responses to the DEIS for creation of the FEIS and it is our goal to submit that by the end of the month for the town boards, for the town. Town's review and the town board's consideration at, at one of the upcoming town board meetings. Because I have a lot of information to cover, I prepared a statement, which I handed up to, to the board and also to the sonographer so that the record will be clear. The subject property is an assemblage of three properties located at the northwest corner of Lawrence Road and Old Northport Road. The combined acreage is approximately 72 acres, which I rounded up from 71 because of the rights of way they're going to be abandoned. And all three properties are zoned R21. The assembled properties are known as the KPE, or some people may know it as the former Carlson property, the Raleigh Poultry Farm, and the Correa property. The original application was submitted in January of 2023 and that application requested a change of zone to the R6 zoning classification. And proposed 391 attached units consisting of townhouses and villas, or, or flats, as they're commonly called. The original application was scheduled for a hearing by this board in December of 2023. And the planning board recommended that the town board adopt a secret positive declaration and require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. The current application is a request. For a change of zone to the planned residential district or PRD in order to construct 288 condominium units. Consisting of 53 detached single-family homes, 82 villas, and 153 townhouses. The plan before you evolved in response to comments from residents, input from the planning department, and most importantly, the town's board's adoption of the Smithtown Comprehensive Plan in April of 2024. I will explain its evolution in more detail, but the key changes from the original plan are as follows. One, the total number of proposed units has been reduced from 391 to 288. Two, 156 attached units were replaced by 53 detached single-family homes adjacent to the single-family homes on Linden Avenue. Three, the overall density has been reduced to four units per acre. And four, a second entrance roadway was added on the north side of the property. What hasn't changed is the nature of the project. All of the proposed new units will be privately owned homes, no rental units are proposed. And the plan still includes a 12,500-square-foot clubhouse, which will be staffed to operate and maintain two heated pools, pickleball courts, a fitness center, a yoga studio, a sports lounge and bar, bocce courts, and a putting green, among other things. Pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the town board adopted a positive declaration on January 18th, 2024. And required the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement, or what we refer to as a DEIS. Beechwood was then required to prepare a draft scope for the DEIS, which lists and describes the topics to be studied and analyzed in the DEIS. During its preparation of the draft scope, Beechwood decided to make several changes to the plan based upon public comments made during the first planning board hearing. The most significant changes were a reduction of the number of proposed units from 391 to 298. And the introduction of 43 clustered single-family homes on the land adjacent to the homes on Linden Avenue. After Beechwood submitted its draft scope for the DEIS, the town board adopted the Smithtown Comprehensive Plan in April of 2024. Based upon Beechwood's revised plan, the draft scope, and the newly adopted comprehensive plan, the town issued a final scoping document on May 10th, 2024. And included a request for a split-zone plan to address the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Based upon its review of the final scoping document and the comprehensive plan, Beechwood then decided to. One, further revise the proposed plan to address the comprehensive plan recommendations regarding clustered medium-density and multifamily development. By reducing the density of the proposed project from 298 units to 288 units and increasing the number of detached single-family homes from 43 to 53. It also reconfigured the development to preserve naturally wooded areas as buffers, including the areas adjacent to the Suffolk County and New York State Preserve land to the north. And to preserve another 10-plus contiguous acres in the center of the property to establish a wildlife habitat corridor and connection to the county and state-owned land. To achieve these objectives, including an overall density that would be consistent with a split-zone plan, the applicant requested a change of zone to PRD and submitted its DEIS in the fall of 2024. DEIS in the fall of 2024. The PRD is the only zoning classification that permits a combination of detached single-family homes and attached townhouses and villas, and the PRD plan became the project plan for the purposes of CEQA review. On February 20, 2025, the town board accepted the DEIS as complete for public review and comment and commenced the public comment period, which expired on April 4, 2025. Beechwood has received and reviewed all of the public comments on the DEIS and will prepare responses to each comment for inclusion in the FEIS, which will be submitted later this month. When finished, the FEIS will demonstrate that all potential impacts of the project plan will be mitigated to the fullest extent possible, and it will further demonstrate in many respects that the proposed project will be environmentally superior to a traditional or clustered single-family subdivision. As noted previously, the project plan was revised to address the comprehensive plan recommendations. The comprehensive plan recommended clustered medium-density development to preserve open space, and it also recommended multifamily development, quote, "if it would provide a public benefit and would not create significant adverse environmental impacts as determined by a site-specific EIS." The adopted DEIS demonstrated that the project would provide several public benefits and would not create significant adverse environmental impacts. The project plan also addresses the comprehensive plan's findings regarding the need for the town to diversify its housing stock and provide additional housing opportunities for residents of all ages and income levels, and especially seniors and young people. Now I want to turn to the site plan. The proposed plan respects existing site conditions and zoning patterns, and the opportunity to combine all three properties to create a planned residential development is a direct result of the town's desire to eliminate heavy industrial uses along this section of Old Northport Road. The proposed site plan respects existing site conditions and zoning patterns by, one, aligning the proposed detached single-family homes in the portion of the property adjacent to the single-family homes on the east side of Linden Avenue. Two, designing the grading and drainage to complement the existing topography and allow for greater preservation of naturally wooded and environmentally sensitive lands. Three, designing the drainage system to collect, store, and channel stormwater overflow from the uplands portion of the property and the adjacent state and county-owned land. Four, utilizing the existing north-to-south valley for stormwater overflow, which promotes the natural treatment and recharge of stormwater, and substantially reduces the amount of clearing and exhumation that would be needed to install drywells. Five, minimizing cut-and-fill grading activity by reclaiming the previously mined and disturbed areas for use as recharge basins. Six, revegetating the previously disturbed areas and recharge basins with native species. Seven, creating stormwater retention areas and aerated ponds that serve as water features for residents and habitat for wildlife. Eight, constructing tiered retaining walls where necessary, so that no single wall height is greater than six feet. Now I want to explain the sewage treatment plan. The proposed development includes an onsite SDP designed to provide capacity for the Beechwood project and additional capacity for potential future residential development in the surrounding area. The proposed SDP will utilize the advanced membrane bioreactor technology, which provides the highest level, the highest quality of approved wastewater treatment available for residential projects in Suffolk County. The MBR is modular, which makes it capable of being upgraded with even more advanced treatment systems when they become available. The MBR will be housed in a one-story concrete block building approximately 40 feet by 80 feet, and the entire sewage treatment process will be contained in the building. The MBR will not produce any odors or noise outside the building and will be screened from view by a six-foot-high black vinyl fence and landscaping. There will be no impacts or adverse effects on the surrounding area. The MBR technology is capable of reducing nitrogen loading to 6 milligrams per liter, which is far below the approved standards for conventional STPs and single-family IA treatment systems. The MBR technology will reduce the overall nitrogen loading of the project to a level equal or better than the overall level of a traditional or clustered medium-density subdivision using the IA treatment systems for single-family homes. The MBR has been approved by the Suffolk County Sewer Agency, and it has also been approved for use at this project by the Suffolk County Water Authority. For the record, I just handed up the Sewer Agency Resolution of Approval and the Suffolk County Water Authority Approval Letter. I would like to turn to traffic at this moment. The project DEIS included a detailed and comprehensive traffic impact study that was reviewed and accepted by the town's professional staff. The TIS, Traffic Impact Study, was performed in accordance with the final scope for the DEIS and analyzed existing conditions, traffic safety, site access and circulation, future traffic volumes, and highway capacity during the weekday AM, PM, and Saturday midday peak time periods, key intersections and driveways, and construction vehicle traffic. As a result of the site access and traffic circulation analysis and comments from area residents regarding existing traffic conditions, a proposed emergency access driveway to Indian Head Road was modified to become a full-access roadway to ensure that new residents and visitors will not drive through the Old Indian Head Road and Old Road neighborhoods. The key intersections and driveway analysis found that the addition of new resident traffic will not significantly impact existing traffic conditions and operations in the area. The traffic study also found that the traffic signal at Indian Head Road and Old Northport Road should be adjusted to allow more green time from Indian Head Road to Old Northport Road. This would improve existing delays on Old Northport Road that will be exacerbated by the Starbucks that is currently under construction. Now I'd like to turn to what I call demographics, which explain certain trends that are occurring in the town that are very relevant to this project. First is population. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, the hamlet of Kings Park had a population of 16,249 in 2023, down from 17,657 in 2013. That's a population decrease of 1,408 people over 10 years, which is more than twice the number of new residents that will likely be generated by this project. Townwide, the overall population decreased from 118,306 to 115,461 over the same period. But the percentage of the population over the age of 55 increased by 5.5% from 31.5% to 37%. More importantly, even though the overall population decreased by 2,845, the actual number of people over the age of 55 increased from 37,294 to 42,687. That's an incredible statistic, underscoring the need to provide more housing choices for both the younger and older segments of the population. Countywide, an estimated 37% of total households includes at least one individual who is 65 or older, which is an increase of 3.4% from 2018. The Census Bureau considers this increase to be statistically significant and attributes the change to the decrease in the percentage of households with individuals under the age of 18. The trends regarding the increase in the number of people over the age of 55 and the decrease in younger segments is expected to continue. Housing inventory. In order to have satisfactory housing choices for every segment of the population, there should be an adequate supply of different housing types for each segment of the population. And the segments of our population that are underserved by the existing inventory are young people and empty nesters, who are generally people over the age of 55 without children in residence. The proposed project will help meet the needs of these segments of the population by providing additional housing opportunities for both groups. In the past 25 years, Beechwood has successfully built and sold 488 townhouses and villas in four condominium developments in the town: Country Point at Kings Park, Country Point at Smithtown, Country Point at Smithtown North, and Country Point Woods at Smithtown. Based upon Census Bureau statistics, regional housing studies, and the findings of the town's 2024 comprehensive plan, the town still needs a more diverse housing inventory to retain empty nesters, and this has been proven to be true by the success of Beechwood's four previous developments in Smithtown. There is a continuing and growing demand for high-quality, maintenance-free lifestyle housing in Smithtown and all across Long Island. The proposed project will also provide more housing opportunities for young couples and first-time homebuyers. Although lifestyle communities are not designed for raising families, the smaller homes will attract working couples not ready to start a family, and 29 homes will be designated as affordable housing for first-time homebuyers in accordance with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The town, in my opinion, does not need more traditional single-family housing to meet the needs of its shrinking population, and there is no shortage of traditional single-family housing in Smithtown. According to the 2024 comprehensive plan, the percentage of single-family homes in Smithtown was 85% in the year 2000, and the percentage is probably the same or slightly lower today. The comprehensive plan also acknowledges that the town's population is growing older at a rate which is higher than the national and county averages. Building more expensive single-family homes will not slow down the loss of young people, but if more housing choices are available, it is much more likely that the town will be able to retain more young people and empty nesters. Economic benefits and community support. Real estate taxes. The total property taxes to be generated by the proposed new development are estimated at $2,787,840. This is an increase of $2,671,371 over the current property taxes, which are $116,000. The project will be tax-positive to the town because it will not need municipal services such as roadway maintenance, snow removal, or garbage removal, which are typically provided by the town in standard residential subdivisions. The project will also be tax-positive to the Kings Park and Smithtown school districts because the largest proportional increase in taxes will be directed to the school districts. The tax levy increase for the Kings Park school district will be $1,774,439, an increase of $1,731,000 over the existing levy, which is currently $42,690. The Smithtown tax levy will increase from $39,330 to $168,533. Jobs. If approved, the total cost of Beechwood's investment in Kings Park is estimated to be $220 million. In the short term, four to five years, the project will create 500 to 550 construction-related jobs, and there will be a substantial increase in the patronage of construction material suppliers. Long-term, the project will generate 10 to 12 permanent clubhouse and management jobs. In both the short term and the long term, the project will substantially enhance the sales and growth of local food and service establishments. The project will also create significant business opportunities for local service providers and contractors, such as landscapers, irrigation technicians, snow removal and roadway maintenance companies, private sanitation, home repairs and improvements, and domestic household services, among many others. The purchasing power associated with more than 600 new residents, along with the short-term and long-term job creation, will provide a tremendous boost to the local economy. Due to its proximity to downtown Kings Park and the economic benefits it will provide during and after construction, the Kings Park Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors recognized that this development will significantly enhance the downtown revitalization of Kings Park and all of its local businesses, and the Board of Directors of the Chamber voted to affirm and support Beechwood's application. I'd like to hand up their letter of support. Worried about our neighbor, we have one industrial neighbor, Winter Brothers, the Winter Brothers Transfer Station on Lawrence Road. Winter's Brothers operates a transfer station and expressed concern with the siting of new homes near its facility. After Beechwood confirmed that no new homes will be sited on the property immediately adjacent to the transfer station, the management of Winter's Brothers also affirmed its support of Beechwood's application, and I'd like to hand in their letter of support. Now I want to talk about the input we received from the residents. As a result of Beechwood's outreach to area residents, several residents made Beechwood aware of an existing problem regarding the use of Old Road and Old Indian Head Road as a shortcut to and from Kings Park, and other problems caused by Sport Times' summer camp operation. And before I forget, I'd also like to hand up five pieces of correspondence addressing the residents with various comments, questions, and issues. Our outreach began in February and continued to as recently as mid-April. Beechwood, U.S. truly, met with Smithtown officials to discuss the traffic problems and offered to donate land to help realign the intersection of Old Road and Old Northport Road and slow traffic down. The town has prepared a draft realignment concept, plan that has been shared with many of the residents, many, all the area residents I wrote to, and the town has also advised that it's considering recommending changes to Sport Times' entrance driveway to better manage the summer camp traffic. One resident expressed concern with the proposed location of one of the single-family houses and potential noise from the bocce court and putting green near the clubhouse. The house, the bocce court, and the putting green will be relocated. Another resident incorrectly, excuse me, assumed another resident incorrectly assumed that Beechwood proposed a driveway entrance on Linden Avenue. There are no proposed entrances or driveways from Linden Avenue, and with driveway entrances on the north and south sides of the property, there is absolutely no reason for any new resident to drive through the Old Road and Old Indian Head Road neighborhood. If you look at the map, I think you can visualize that. If you live in the center of the new property to be developed and you wanted to travel to Kings Park, you're not going to go to Old Northport Road and come up Old Indian Head Road. You're going to exit out at Old Indian, at the light on Indian Head Road. So, that's a very important point. Also, based upon their familiarity and experience with the condominium community lifestyle, many residents of the existing Country Point at Kings Park have come forward to express support for the new Country Point project. The existing Country Point development sold out quickly in the early 2000s, as did the Lake Bridge Club in the early 1990s, because there was and is a continuing demand for lifestyle communities with maintenance-free homeownership for couples that want to downsize their homes and reduce their tax bills. That's the main body of my presentation, but I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about what I call misinformation and get into the record some of the things that we've been hearing and some of the answers, the correct answers to these questions. PRD zoning. The PRD is the most appropriate zoning classification in the town for planning a condominium development and incorporating a variety of different housing types. Contrary to some misinformation in the community, the PRD was not created for Beechwood. The PRD is an established zoning classification that the town board created in the early 1970s for the development of the Fairfield community in St. James. Density. Some critics still claim that Beechwood is proposing 391 units or six units per acre, which is untrue and has been untrue for a long time. Beechwood is proposing 288 homes spread over 72 acres, which is four units per acre, not six. It is not a high-density project. It is a large project because the property is large, but the plan is balanced and reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Rental apartments. Although Beechwood made it clear at the first hearing that it is not proposing rental apartments, some people still choose to believe or mislead others into thinking that Beechwood is proposing rental apartments. That's just not true, and it never has been true. All of the proposed new homes will be for sale to the general public and will be owner-occupied. Also, in order to sell condominium units, the developer has to obtain approval of an offering plan from the Attorney General of the State of New York. The offering- The offering plan will set the prices and the terms of sale to prospective buyers and will include the proposed HOA rules and regulations for living in Country Point Estates. Affordable housing. There is no Section 8 or HUD-sponsored housing. The proposed development will consist of 288 units, owner-occupied, and the home prices are currently estimated to range from $700,000 to $900,000-plus. That could change, but that's what the current estimates are. The Long Island Workforce Housing Act requires municipalities to set aside a minimum of 10% of the total number of new homes as affordable housing, and the proposed plan includes 29 affordable homes. The town has also established its own affordable housing policy based upon criteria set forth in the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, and it will set the prices and administer a first-time homebuyer lottery based upon its qualifying criteria. Big topic, school district. The property is situated in two school districts, Kings Park and Smithtown, but the vast majority of the new homes will be in the Kings Park School District. Both the Kings Park and Smithtown school districts have seen consistently declining enrollment over the past decade and beyond. Kings Park enrollment was 25% lower in 2023, '24 than it was in 2014, '2015, and Smithtown enrollment was 22% lower over the same 10-year period. Based upon what we believe is a misleading analysis that included all traditional, single-family homes in the district, the Kings Park School District wrote a letter to the town and claimed that the Beechwood project will burden the district by generating 100 new school-aged children in the district. However, all of the proposed new homes are two-bedroom condominiums, not traditional, single-family homes, and these types of communities attract empty nesters and young couples without children, not families. To provide the most accurate, real-world assessment, our environmental planning consultant contacted the Kings Park School District and requested records regarding the number of school-aged children attending district schools from the two largest condominium developments in Kings Park currently, Lake Bridge Club and Country Point at Kings Park. The school district advised that Country Point had seven, seven, school-aged children. It's 137 units. In 2023, and the Lake Bridge Club had zero school-aged children. It's important to note that the combined number of units in both developments is 337, 49 more than the 288 units proposed by Beechwood, and both of the existing developments have three-bedroom units, which Country Point Estates is not offering. To make sure the low enrollment numbers were not an anomaly, our consultant also requested enrollment records from the Smithtown School District. Beechwood has built 282 non-age-restricted units in two condominium communities in the Smithtown School District, Country Point at Smithtown and Country Point at Smithtown North. The school district's records confirm that only 28 school-aged children from these two communities combined attended Smithtown schools. Based upon this real-world data and the established ratios of .05 and .09 students per unit in Kings Park and Smithtown, it is reasonable to expect that this project will generate .14 students per unit, which is a conservative projection that would result in the enrollment of a maximum of 38 students in Kings Park and three in Smithtown. To put all of this in perspective, the Kings Park School enrollment has decreased by an average of 2.8% every year since 2007. In the past 25 years, enrollment peaked at 4,200 in 2007 and declined to 2,619 in 2024, for a loss of 1,581 students, or 38% over the last 17 years. In the last five years alone, the district has lost 309 students. Keeping in mind that the proposed project will not be fully built out until 2030 or 2031, it's absurd for anyone to claim that the district cannot fiscally support the absorption of 38 students over the next six years, when it has lost 309 students over the last five years. To the best of our knowledge, the school district budgets have continued to increase, but the district hasn't shed any staff positions or resources. Even if someone wanted to accept the school district's unrealistic projections, the proposed project would still produce fewer students over the next six years than the school district lost last year. It should also be noted that the district will continue to experience declining enrollment as the younger segments of Kings Park's population continue to decline, which means that the district will probably lose another 200-plus students by 2031. Ironically, it should also be remembered that the existing Country Point at Kings Park development is located on the site of the former Indian Head Elementary School, which was closed in 1979 and subsequently sold and rezoned to R6. It also shouldn't go unnoticed that the Kings Park School District decided it was entitled to speak on behalf of the Smithtown School District, but didn't include any data or analysis from Smithtown. The Smithtown School District did not comment on our consultant's analysis. Traffic impacts on local roads. New residents will not be adding traffic to Old Road or Old Indian Head Road. The proposed development will have two entrances that will provide direct access to Old Northport Road to the south and Indian Head Road to the north. New resident traffic will enter and exit from Old Northport Road and Indian Head Road and will not need to drive through the local neighborhood. Also, there are no driveways or roadway connections to Linden, which I covered previously. So, no new residents will be driving on Linden Avenue. The traffic study also considered the new Starbucks on Indian Head Road, and even though the proposed sports facility to the west of Starbucks was approved 11 years ago and may never be built, the traffic study also included that possibility. At most, even if the sports facility is built sometime in the future, the traffic study determined that only the signal at Old Northport Road and Indian Head Road may need a timing adjustment. The traffic impact study is included in the DEIS and it's available for review. Final topic, open space. I've heard that term a lot. Critics of the project say the property should be preserved as open space, but they ignore or fail to realize that the hamlet of Kings Park has more open space per capita than any other hamlet in the town of Smithtown. In terms of population and land area, Kings Park is the fourth-largest of six hamlets in Smithtown. However, Kings Park has more parkland than any other hamlet, 1,181 acres, and the highest percentage of parkland area, 26%. The inventory of existing park and open-space assets includes the Suncometa State Park, Nissakuaq River State Park, all of the local town parks and beaches, school district playgrounds, county open space, and the Kings Park unique area, which is a 69-acre woodland preserve immediately adjacent to the subject property. There is no shortage of open space and parkland for use and enjoyment by Kings Park residents or to protect wildlife habitat, and there is no need or reason for the town or county to spend taxpayer money to purchase or acquire private property or ask private property owners to donate more land, to donate or dedicate more land. It's just not needed. In fact, the Smithtown Comprehensive Plan confirms that, quote, "The town has a parkland surplus when accounting for town, county, and state-owned parks," and found that, based upon a benchmark of 8.5 acres of parkland per 1,000 residents established by the National Recreation and Park Association, the town surpasses the benchmark by more than 3,100 acres. We're blessed with a lot of open space in parks. One of the things Smithtown has always prided itself on. So, in conclusion, I just want to say that some of the critics of this project are just misinformed, and many of them don't realize or remember that Country Point at Kings Park and Lake Bridge Club caught quite a star when they were proposed, but both communities sold out very quickly. Both communities are very attractive, and both have become established neighborhoods of Kings Park. In fact, I'm certain that there are residents from both of these neighborhoods here tonight, and they can speak for themselves. The demand for this kind of housing continues to increase, and Country Point Estates will become another successful neighborhood in Kings Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I know that everyone wants to speak tonight. Everybody will have a chance to speak. I ask you to...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I forgot to add, we did also retain the services of Lynch Appraisal Limited, because I wanted people to be aware that this project will not adversely impact property values, so we have prepared an appraisal report for the board's consideration. I'd like to hand it up right now. It concludes that the new project will bring much-needed, non-age-restricted housing to Kings Park and Smithtown as a whole, with opportunities for all market age groups particularly attractive to empty nesters and active adults. And will increase property values.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, so everyone will get a chance to speak. I ask, number one, when you do come up to speak, come to the mic, speak to the board and address the board, and please give your name and address, and also spell your name for the stenographer. And I ask that everyone in attendance, please observe that the person who is speaking, that should be the only person speaking. Anybody else who has any comments, if you need to talk to each other or make additional comments to each other while someone is speaking, please leave the room, and you can do that in the hall and then come back. It's only fair to the speaker to be the only one speaking, so... With that said, we will now entertain questions. Yes, sir, you may come up.
Thank you very much to the board for letting me speak. My name is Bruce Waldner, W-A-L-D-N-E-R. I live at 32 Mantac Path in Kings Park with my wife, Lois. The proposed Country Point Estates has much going for it, and I encourage the board to approve this project. My wife and I currently live in Country Point, Kings Park, across Indian Head Road from the proposed site. We have a very comfortable townhouse, but what excites us about the new Country Point Estates is that it offers several different home options, two of which offer one-floor living, which would be better for us. This is something that many condominium communities do not offer. We are particularly interested in the detached ranch-style home in a gated community with a lifestyle free of lawn care and snow shoveling. The detached home also makes it seem more like a private home. The new community proposes to have this option, as well as villas that have one family on the ground floor and another family on the top floor. It will also have townhouses. It is a larger community with 288 units and therefore has a larger clubhouse with a larger fitness center and two pools. And a larger clubhouse will offer the owners more organized activities, and I am told that we'll even have a social director to engage the community in these activities. Communities of this sort offer a lifestyle, offer a lifestyle that are perfect for retired people like us. Although this is not a 55 and older community, which I did not want for myself, it will not negatively affect the size of the school population, as it will attract mostly retired people desiring this lifestyle. Another plus is that it will have two access roads to help the traffic patterns, one from Old Indian Head Road and the other from Old Northport Road. I called and spoke to one representative of the Beechwood organization about something I felt would make the community even better. As I stated before, I live in Country Point, Kings Park. I watched my neighbor across the street from me charging her electric vehicle many nights. She has to keep her garage door open the whole night in order to do that. I suggested that the new units have an electrical outlet outside the garage for that purpose. I was pleased that the answer I got was that they will look into this as either an option or a definite as they further develop these plans. I do not have an EV, but I might consider one if I had an easy way to charge it. This project offers an exciting enhancement to the Kings Park community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yes.
Excuse me, I'd like to ask you a question, please. Would you return to the mic?
Can you please come up to the microphone again, sir?
How long have you lived in Country Point?
I've, we've lived there for, no, it's, I gotta think about it again. Since 2006, we lived there. It opened in 2004. We're the second owners of our particular townhouse. The former owners...
Were you originally from the Kings Park community?
No, we lived a mile and a half away in Comac.
Okay. And you don't like the shallow snow? Did I hear you correctly?
Well, actually, the shoveling snow was probably the last straw that broke the camel's back that got me to look at Country Point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next.
My name's Lisa Bielsi, B-I-O-L-S-I. I live at, oh, sorry, I do speak quickly, sorry. B-I-O-L-S-I. Lisa is my first name. I live at 83 Manitou, also in Country Point at Kings Park. I do disagree with some of the presentation. I don't think as a whole, the whole community, I am on the HOA board, that the whole community is supporting this. I think that some residents that are supporting it are supporting it because they are, like Mr. Waldner said, are interested in moving in that and potentially downsizing from where they are right now. That's a personal choice, that's fine. We have asked as a board to have the representative from Beechwood come to a board meeting so that we could discuss our issues and findings. That has not been done. It is true, I asked Charlie myself, he was supposed to set that up. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. So, we did ask, we did request that, and that hasn't been done. So, now, whether our, I asked the management company. So, that was something that the management company said that they would set up for us. But what most concerns me is looking at this plan. The entrance that's going to go, from what I see, and this is the first time that I've actually seen this, on Old Indian Head Road, I believe that's where a gatehouse is going to be, and perhaps somebody can just clarify that for me. What that does is it dumps out onto Old Indian Head Road. There is a blind, it's a grade, and it goes up to that traffic light. That traffic light is our entrance and exit out of Country Point at Kings Park. We have one entrance and exit at that location. So, it's interesting to me that Beechwood is having more than one entrance, whereas they did our community, we have one. That impact to the traffic there, I don't believe, has probably really been done. There is Sport Time, there are people that come that, but I'm concerned about the increase in traffic in and out of that, what looks to be the main gate, that we're going to share that traffic light with. So, in my mind, that's what worries me. I see here that the traffic study was done on Old Northport Road and Indian Head Road, which maybe increasing the timing of the light is one thing, but in my mind, over there too, with Destination KP, which construction has started because I hear it every night, every day, I'm concerned that that whole intersection should probably be reconfigured and really take into account where we're dumping out onto Indian Head Road, that shared entrance, that shared one traffic light, that we're going to have difficulty getting in and out of our neighborhood with this increase of residents coming out of this new area. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 wait till the end, wait till the end. Wait, wait till the end. No, 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 wait till the end.
Anybody else want to be heard? Come on up to the mic, please.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Michael Kettell, K-E-T-T-E-L-L. I live at 20 Linden Avenue in Kings Park. I've lived in Kings Park my entire life. I am, you know, I did my due diligence when I purchased my house. I looked at the property records for everything. I saw that I was buying a house in a single-family, you know, residential area with single-family homes with, you know, half-acre zoning. That's what I expected. That's what I expect to keep in my neighborhood. I am one of the people that, you know, I feel that the town should be attracting to stay in, you know, the area. I'm a young person, I'm under 55, I don't have any kids. I work in the area, I, you know, I work with a lot of other professionals, and I see how hard it is for them to buy homes on Long Island right now. I do not see how this project is going to be benefiting them. You know, people with one baby or two, or, you know, anything like that, or even starter families. The cost of these homes, as Mr. Pizzuli had said, between $700,000 and $900,000 is prohibitively expensive for first-time homebuyers. I recognize that there will be a portion of these, you know, of these parcels will be set aside for affordable housing. You know, I get that, and, you know, I don't think that is doing enough, though, for the mission that we really should be upholding to support our young people and, you know, keep them within the town. I think they have much more of an income-generating potential, they have much more of a spending power, you know, potential than potentially other demographics, and I think that's why power, you know, potential than potentially other demographics, and I think that's why it's important that we keep this parcel the way that they are, a single-family home zoning with half-acre, and, you know, develop it that way, so that way, everybody who had done their due diligence, who purchased homes in this area, you know, have lived there for a long time, keep the tone and the character of the resident of the neighborhood that they have, that they have come to expect. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else? Gentleman speaking first.
Matt Blake, B.L.A.K.E. I live on Old Indian Head Road, and I'm not really opposed to the development itself. I'm more concerned about the traffic that you're going to dump onto Old Indian Head Road. I know they said earlier that that's not going to happen, but the entrance and exit to this place is actually on Old Indian Head Road. Now, the traffic study that was done, I can't imagine that it was done on that intersection because you can't get in or out of Old Indian Head Road while the camp is in session, while they're dropping people off and picking people up. Old Indian Head Road, wall-to-wall traffic, bumper-to-bumper, end-to-end, for a half-an-hour. Is anybody here on Old Indian Head? So, it's bumper-to-bumper traffic for a half-an-hour, twice a day, in both directions. So, there's no way that you can put all the traffic from that development onto Old Indian Head Road. It's not going to work. Can't do it. So, I don't know if you have plans to move it, move the entrance of the gym or the daycare, but something's got to be done about that before you even consider this. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Next.
Hi, my name is Lori Kessler, K.E.S.S.L.E.R. I live at 34 Amherst Lane in Smithtown. I've owned that home for 40 years. I'm 70 years old. It's time for me to downsize to a smaller house, get rid of my pool. I have been looking elsewhere in the area. I've looked at the Hamlet in Comac, those houses selling today, the Greens, those houses are gone in a day, so I think there is a very big need for older people. My son has moved back to the Smithtown area. I want to stay here. My husband's business is in the area. We want to stay, but we want another lifestyle, and I think this is the perfect solution for us, and I, many of my friends are in the same boat, and they also would like, you know, many of my friends are interested in this development. So, I vote for the, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Carol Steger, S.T.E.G.E.R. I didn't want to go too fast for you. And my address is 3 Old Road, Kings Park. The property, the woods right next to my house is where they're going to be building. They can, I'm not addressing this gentleman or anybody else. My house, when you're pulling out of my driveway, the woods are here, Linden is here, I live on that corner, okay? How they can say that there's not going to be an impact of the traffic? How are they going to stop people from coming out of that development and coming, okay? There have been many times, and it's not even a development yet, but there have been many times people coming through and cutting through Old Road, my house, my, right, as I'm pulling out of my driveway. More accidents, more people, few times, people lost control of their car because they're whipping around because they want to cut through, ended up on my front lawn, okay? Now, you're going to increase the traffic by, I can't even tell you the figures, okay? I don't know. I am not, that's not my business to study the traffic patterns and the impact statements, everything else. Now, another question I have, a sewage treatment plant. I asked the board, you have the house, I've lived there for over 30 years now. Now, all of a sudden, they had this plan, the original plan, said nothing about a sewage treatment plant. Now, all of a sudden, there's a sewage treatment plant. Would you, and I'm going to question everyone on the board, would you want to buy a house knowing there's a sewage treatment plant literally a stone's throw away? I wouldn't. That is going to affect my property value, although the gentleman said it's not going to affect it. When you come to buy a house, I want to sell my house, and they come to my house and they go, what is that? It's a sewage treatment plant. Property value? Now, when we first moved into the house 30-something years ago, the dump on Old, on Town Line, you can smell the dump. That was years ago. We dealt with it because it was a distance away. Now, I'm very animated, I'm sorry, I'm also very tired, but now you're going to be building it next to my house. Other people in the development, they want to have, their letter that we received, it said that there are going to be no young children. You have somebody who's buying a house for $700,000 or $800,000, starting out, mommy and dad maybe helped them out with the down payment on the house, I don't know, but now you're going to tell them that they can't have children? How is that, how are you going to do that? You build a house with two bedrooms. My house is two bedrooms. I raised a son, okay, in a two-bedroom home. But those houses that are tw- that are two-bedroom, that nobody's going to want to raise a family in, that's not true. They can extend their houses and put another bedroom on, close off a garage and make a bedroom in there. People do it, people have done it, I've seen it, I've heard of it, I've witnessed it, okay? You cannot guarantee. Now, how are they going to guarantee that as I'm pulling out of my driveway, these people coming out of that development aren't going to go, zup, zup, whoop, my block? Okay, I'm sorry, like I said, I'm very tired, I'm very animated, I'm terribly sorry if I'm dwindling on and rambling, but those are just some of my concerns, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak, sir?
Keith Gentile, G.E.N.T.I.L.E., 21 Tony Drive, Kings Park. So, I more have, just have some questions. When we first, the map was up, there were two other properties that were also there. I think one was 50 acres and one was like five acres, and I also think they're potentially up for sale, and maybe there's some plans to build on there. I know that's not what this hearing's about, but my concern is mostly traffic, and if we rezone, or if we approve a rezone, my fear is those other pieces of property are going to follow that zoning, which will make the traffic even more. So, I just thought that was an important comment to make, that the decisions we make tonight might happen to the other pieces of property, too.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Would anybody else like to speak at this time? Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Diane Motherway. In full disclosure, I wrote that letter from the Kings Park Chamber of Commerce. I'm the executive director of the board, and we're very aware of the project. Motherway, M.O.T.H.E.R.W.A.Y.
And your address, state your address, please.
116 Lake Bridge Drive in Kings Park. So, I speak from many different perspectives here. As a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I speak on the benefits that the town will gain from the development of this property. Independent of Mr. Pizzuli over there, I did a lot of research myself, and completely independently of him, I had no idea what he was going to be talking about tonight. I came up with almost the exact same statistics. The density of the Kings Park in 2011, we had 17,541 residents. In 2023, we have 16,249, a decrease of 11, 12, 1300. School district is the same in 2009, 2008 and 9, we had 33,932 students, 23, 24, which is the most recent statistic available, we had 2,619, 1,300 students less. I also have, I live in Lake Bridge, which is a condominium community, but before I moved to Lake Bridge, I sold a 3,500-square-foot house on a half-an-acre of land right on the other side of Lawrence Road. It was known as Pheasant Chase or Pheasant Run. It was a smaller development, but I went from a big, beautiful house that was just too big for my husband and I any longer. We moved into Lake Bridge about 11 years ago. We're very, very happy there. Took him five minutes to get used to, took me about six months, but all kidding aside, when a house or a unit, I own a three-bedroom unit in Lake Bridge, so we have a number of three-bedroom units and the balance are two-bedroom units. The units in Lake Bridge, when they go on sale, they're not available two weeks later, and they're not cheap. They just, that's the lifestyle that people want, and they're coming from this community, they're not coming from other places. I don't mean they're not coming from Comac, or they're not coming from NissConce, or they're not coming from Baldwin, but they're coming from mostly local Long Island, and people want to stay here. I could live in Florida, I could be retired, I don't choose to. I want to be here, but I don't want my 3,500-square-foot house any longer. And the, the house that I lived in that was just the other side of Lawrence Road, that portion of Lawrence Road didn't even go through then. When I bought my house, my, the one that I sold, Lawrence Road was not a through road, it didn't go through to Old Northport Road. They since, about a couple of years after we bought it, they opened it up. But that area there that's up on the map, that's not included in the development, is such an eyesore. Anything they put around it would be an improvement. Our builder, when, it was before Waze and before you had, you could plug in your phone how you were going to get somewhere, our builder would send people, when he would put an ad in the paper, he would send people on the circuitous route so that they didn't pass that area to see the new houses that he was building. I can only say from a business perspective, I think it's a home run for Kings Park community, and as a resident of Kings Park, I feel the same way. I highly recommend it on every level.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sir.
Hello, my name is Joshua Cattone, C.A.T.O.N.E. I live at 20 Linden Avenue in Kings Park. I'm just, I don't understand how this is going to help the downtown revitalization when it's not even walkable to downtown. So, these people aren't going to be able to walk to Main Street and shell out money at the bars and restaurants, and why should they go up to Main Street when they can go to their clubhouse, and they can go to the bar there or the restaurant there? So, how is putting this site so far away from downtown Kings Park with its onsite amenities actually going to help any of the businesses or residents of Kings Park? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? I've got gentlemen first.
Hi, my name is Tom Sternweis, S.T.I.R.N.W.E.I.S. I live at Gingerbread Road, which is west of Lawrence Avenue. I'm concerned about this, the Giswali property also being zoned, high-density, down the road. Another issue is, again, when we bought our houses 25 years ago, it was the R21 zoning, which was important to me when I picked the area of Kings Park to live in. The other issue is the odors that will come from the sewage treatment plant. I'd like to know if there's going to be a bond placed, the performance bond, so any kind of odors are addressed after it doesn't work out as planned. That's my major concern, is the odors coming from the plant and being addressed after construction is complete, and they want to walk away from the project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Mathy. M is in Mary, A is in Andrew, F is in Frank, F is in Frank, E is in Elizabeth. I live at 16 Old Road, and I'm opposed to this. I mean, I'm pretty certain that most people, when they go to buy their homes, go and look for a certain type of a home, a certain area. People do their, their due diligence, and they go where it's going to fit what their needs are. I have lived in Kings Par-, uh, Smithtown Kings Park 63 years, my entire life. I have seen so much destruction of our, our free lands, our woods. When my parents moved to Landing Avenue, it was a dirt road. I can't even begin to tell you the devastation that I have seen. People moved here because they wanted. They wanted the woods, they wanted wildlife, they wanted space. My dad had just finished a home out in one of the boroughs, and he saw a house that was for sale in one of the magazines that had a pool in the basement. He dragged my mother out, who was like, we just finished the house. My father, when they got there, turned around to my mother and said, you know what? I want my children to have a backyard, I want them to see trees, I want them to see forests. Again, this was our choice, and again, everybody, I believe the same thing. People choose where they want to live. To me, it is, I don't understand how that, that the taxes that we pay to the town to look out for our, for our interests. I don't see that building all of these houses is, is going to change anything. You're talking about older people moving into these houses, older people, so where is any kind of growth coming in? You're talking about older people in these complexes. These people aren't going to be boosting our economy. Second, I don't know about anybody, but if you walk around from Old Road, probably within a five-mile radius, you can count at least five developments, okay? We're Kings Park, we're a small, local town. While this building may be nice and beautiful and whatever, it doesn't belong in the middle of Kings Park. That is going to be the biggest eyesore you ever want to see, and I'm not talking looks-wise. I'm talking because it doesn't belong. And if any of you know or drive around all of the land that they are now taking down and building these condominiums or apartments, it's horrible. It's not right. The majority of people are against this. Right up the road from me, I, every day, I go up Plymouth Boulevard. There used to be a tiny section of woods, not very wide, and as I kept going, the whole thing was plowed, plowed down clear. All that small wooded area, gone. They're building there. It's the middle of a neighborhood. It doesn't, it's not, it doesn't, it's not supposed to be there, okay? We all came here, again, like I said, we wanted- We, we all came here, again, like I said, we wanted land, we wanted wildlife, we wanted whatever, you know? And, and by putting these complexes for the older people, you're telling me there aren't going to be any kids? Well, so what does that mean? We're going to be shutting down our schools? Isn't it better to be doing the residential where people can come, young people, and have children and start growing Kings Park that way? You know, you're, you're encouraging a fifty-five and older crowd? What is that going to do for us? It's really not going to do much. You know, again, how, how many of these condo complexes can we actually have? And I know it's happening everywhere, it's not just Smithtown. But please, consider the people who are paying the taxes and have been paying taxes for years. Don't we get a say? Don't we get a right? You know, perhaps maybe they'll be in compliance, or maybe they won't be in compliance. But how is that right? Or how is that fair to people who came here in good faith? I mean, first, it was zoned as a light business. Well, they didn't want light business because they won't make money. So they then wanted to change to residential. Now, here we are again. Residential wasn't good enough. Now, they want to put two hundred and eighty-eight units. Again, I, I'm sorry, I just believe that the people have a right. I mean, there are other places, and if you look around, next we'll be, we won't be calling this Smithtown anymore, we'll be calling it Country Point. Country Point at Kings Park, another borough. So, right or wrong, whether this is in compliance or not, I just feel it's wrong. We, we as a community have a right to stand up for what we purchased, what we believe in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Mr. Rosato?
My name is Mike Rosato. I live at 12 Country Oaks Drive, Kings Park, New York. Sure, it's R-O-S-A-T-O. I'm the president of the Kings Park Community Association. The association is opposed to the Beechwood Organization's two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-unit housing complex on seventy-one acres of mostly old-growth forest and farmland, east of Indian Head Road and north of Old Northport Road in Kings Park. Their proposal for two-hundred-and-eighty-eight housing units on seventy-one acres is two times what is allowed under current zoning and would require a zone change from half-acre residential, two units per acre, to planned residential community, six units per acre. If approved, it would set a precedent that could lead to similar requests on an adjacent forty acres, potentially adding a staggering total of five hundred new housing units to the area. The sheer number of potential new homes would adversely affect the area's environment, drinking water, traffic, schools, and quality of life, and would cha, and would change the character of the surrounding neighborhoods consisting of single-family homes, a poultry farm, and an eighty-five-acre nature preserve. It's obvious that a change of zoning would only benefit the landowners, or two of the landowners, who are in contract to sell to the Beechwood Organization, since it would double the value of their property. Because a zone change of this, on this site would provide no discernible benefits to our hamlet, the Kings Park Community Association is opposed to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think there's a gentleman over there.
Hi, my name is Toby Carlson. C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I reside at sixty-eight Maple Avenue in Northport, New York. My business property is on one-forty Old Northport Road in Kings Park, New York. I've been a community member for a hundred and forty years, my family and my family and my family before then. I just want to thank the board for having this hearing tonight. I want to thank the presenter, I think he did a great job, and I would thank you for the community that showed up. I would ask the board that they consider striking from the record the testimony of Mike Rosato. He is not here as a resident or representative, he's here on a political basis. He sold this lot, right here, and the neighboring property for a profit of three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand just a few months ago before he opposed this project. The records have been submitted to the Ethics Board, and I think the board should know that the testimony is under investigation. And I want to make this a note, the people that flip properties and then go behind everybody's back and tell everybody, I'm going to oppose this project, is just wrong. Ethically and morally wrong. He stood up there and said that the only people that are going to profit from this are the developers. Well, guess what? That's not true. Mike Rosato benefited from it, and now he's running an election campaign against a supervisor on the town board that doesn't deserve that. And I want the people of this, this town to know what the facts are. That people with integrity, this town deserves people of integrity. And I trust the board to make the note in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Okay, sir?
Thank you for having me. My name is Manny Koukoulas, K-O-U-K-O-U-L-A-S, and I'm a resident at Eight Witcher Boulevard in Comac. I've been there for twenty-five years. Prior to that, I lived on the other side of Comac at Townline Road, and so I've been here since nineteen eighty-nine. And at that time, I became founding member of the Townline Civic Association, and we were formed because at the time there was a power plant that was looking to be built on Townline Road. And a couple of years later, the community got together and we never made it happen. So the power plant was never built. I bring that up because what I see here today is not, nothing but a positive element for the community. Tax income, busy, businesses will be increased because of the people here, the right development of this property for housing, which all of us know, if you have children and they're trying to find a house anywhere, they can't find anything less than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand anyway, and that's something that's used. So I'm just here really to say that I'm in fully support of this. I mean, I know there are some little things like about where the entrance may be and things like that that may need to be looked at, but I think the presentation that they provided was absolutely excellent. I'm in support of it, and frankly, I think we need it from a tax-based perspective, from a business perspective, and I intend to be here for a while, and I just wanted to thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers?
Anybody else want to talk?
Okay, sir.
Well, I've never had one, so this is it, you know? That's my, my first meeting, but. My name is Thomas MacTutus, M-A-C-T-U-T-U-S, and that's over again at twenty-three Country Lane Drive, Kings Park. My observation is that the gentleman who gave his presentation, and I've said I'm, I'm an air pollution engineer, was, that's my background, but the math don't add up. It's like a little bit of an algebra problem there. I don't know if the town board picked up on it, but the one nice, older woman did. If you're displacing people or counting people who live in Kings Park of a certain age group, and then you're saying, okay, well, we got to keep those people, well, they're already living in the town. So are they going to be splitting and cloning themselves and living in two locations? So that math really doesn't add up. That's sort of, that's like pathetic, you know, poor. I don't mean to be rude there to, you know, by the terminology, you know, to the gentleman. But, and then also about younger people and, you know, having a place to live, well, I don't know. But reality, seven-hundred thousand going to start? What young person could afford seven-hundred thousand? I got neighbors trying to find places for their kids, they're in their thirties, they've been working for a number of years, and they can't afford their houses right now going seven-hundred thousand. So who's going to be living there? What's he saying he's providing for? That's nonsense. Come on, let's get real. That's ridiculous. And that's called a straw man. So that's an automatically false logic. That's just first semester college. So he's setting up a straw man, he's also, you know, beginning, he's also doing a bandwagon technique, and those are just poor, you know, logics that automatically failed. You know, they can't prove anything before this board. You can't be saying that you're going to be providing for people, and then also it's elderly people, well, where are they getting that seven-hundred thousand dollars from? And he didn't even say if it was in today's dollars to tomorrow dollars. So in inflationary costs and, and the reduction of the buying power that the people are going to have on buying up to fork out that money. Now, as an engineer, I, I love the place, I think it's great, you know? I mean, I hate, I used to go up there and get eggs from Morley's Farm, I'm going to hate, that's going to, that's a bummer. And regarding the older woman who spoke, we can go back to the time of founding of the country, let's go back to that time, and you went and you had a town, and you built that town. Now what happens if someone else came to that town and wanted to change it? You told them, take a hike, go build your own town. And we don't call it that, but when someone pays taxes based upon the zones, the town entered a contract with them. You might not call it a contract, but that's in essence what it is, it's a contract, and you took all those residents' money based upon that contract and based upon those zones. They bought that house based upon those zones, and they should be respected. So you can call it a zone, or you can call it something else so that you can be able to change it and have an excuse to change it, because, oh, we changed zones, and we're allowed to change zones. You could argue that point for the people who bought it with those certain zones, that, well, you know, zone really wasn't laid in concrete because that's why we call it a zone, so you bought the house with those zones in place, but it was able to be changed. That could be a possible argument from, from, from the board. But then you got the ethics problem. So, you know, they, those people bought the house with those expectations, some sort of combination should be ma, should be made to them, I would think, in fairness, because you're changing the zone. But getting back to the story about the property and the revolutionary times when we set up the country, if you change Kings Park, and it's got a certain, I've, I've been here sixty-three years, I was, I was supposed to be born here, but the house wasn't finished till four months later, right? Where is someone going to go to find a Kings Park? There's no Kings Parks left. Kings Park is gone. Are you going to build another Kings Park? You're going to just flatten out some field somewhere and put up trees and put up the spreads? And then guys saying about, oh, we got so many parks. Well, good, we'll call Kings Park, we're not called Little Park, we'll call Kings Park, we're the park of kings. You know, we're the king of parks. Well, that's, that's our, that's our color. So people came here for that, for that feeling of a small town. So if you want to change a small town, well, right, right, they have to change it. You know, and they're saying about building other places where has been successful, that makes a lot of sense. Well, yeah, they're successful, but then they're no longer that town. And I thought, when I was growing up, as I was a kid, you want to shop a tree down, you have to get town approval, because there was a tree ordinance. And I hear somebody talking in the background, can they obey the chairwoman and be quiet? Or is he above?
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, okay. Yeah. I was still trying to talk to the board. I was just turning my head to give them a hint, but thank you, thank you. Well, it's distracting to me, I'm losing my place, you know what I'm saying?
You can see that, huh?
Yeah, me too. Yeah, Christmas is coming, that's right, buddy. And so is New Year. Happy New Year to you. But so the thing is that with, you know, regards to the property changing, I've lost my, my spot now. That's, that's the rudeness you warned about, right?
You can say your name and call it a day.
Not really, because, you know, I don't have my fifteen minutes done yet of fame, right? I'm not being a smart aleck, though, I'm just teasing around because like we're neighbors, right? It's all in good, we're just.
Sixty-seven years, so.
Yeah, you have four years on.
I've never seen Smithtown better.
Yes. Well, that's, that's, that's your opinion, that's your opinion. To me, it's.
And you have your opinion.
That's right, and I'm allowed to express my mind. So the thing is that it's no longer going to be the same town. So you guys weigh that out. That's your decision to weigh it out. That's why you're in that spot, not me. I'm just representing that it's going to be different, you're not going to be able to get it back, it's going to be gone. And that's the old song, you know, they pay the parking lot, blah, 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 and they built the, you know, thing, whatever. That's the right point. Because as, you know, the town needs, needs to also face changes and have increases of income, because people do squander the money, like eighty-three million dollars for something where they borrow the money on the future dollars, that's another whole issue. But let me get out of here. Yeah, that's what I said.
Thank you.
I just got to give that as an example. All right, take care, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else want to speak? Okay, sir?
My name is Robert Steger, S-T-E-G-E-R. I'm at three Old Road, and I want to talk about the traffic issue. If they have the entrance going onto Old Indian Head Road, where it goes into Indian Head Road, to make a left there, that light is like five minutes long, so nobody's going to want to make a left there. So they're going to travel down to Old, Old Northport Road to make their lefts there. And a lot of the times, I got to wait for three, four lights sometimes just to make a left there. So if you, they're going to put all those people on there, they're going to have to widen that road and make it a right, a middle, and a left turn. You can't just twig the light. And I have a feeling that once they have this development in, let's see, east, west of Lawrence, there's a big couple of acres there, plot, they're going to want to build on that because they're cleaning that area up right now. And I'm sure there's going to be a couple of more hundred developments going in there. So I hope they do a proper traffic study on that, because the traffic's already going, getting to be a nightmare. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? One more person?
Good evening, I'm Arlene Page, P-A-G-E, twelve Old Road. And I just got to reiterate that traffic is not, they, they are saying it's not going to go on Old Road. How is that possible when everybody cuts through there to go to Old Northport Road? Not Old Northport, Old Indian Head Road. And it is horrendous over there, the traffic, where only a single road. You have one car parked there, you can only fit one car past. So I just wanted to make sure that that's going to be a whole big issue, and how do you prevent them from going down there? I don't get that part. They're saying they're not going to go. How? Where are they going to go? They're going to go Old Northport, but they all still take that Old Road as a cut-through. And it's already bad. So I just wanted to mention that, it is.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. I think one more person, okay?
Hello, my name is Joanne Varelo, V-A-R-E-L-L-O. So I just wanted to, nine Wildflower Drive in Kings Park. Just wanted to pile on, on the traffic issue, just kind of wanted to state for the record that, that is a concern of mine. I'm kind of on the other end of Meadow Road and come out to Indian Head via Old Northport Road. And, you know, over the last ten years, I've definitely seen a marked difference in that traffic there. So, you know, really interested in digging into this traffic study because as a resident, and I'm up here as a resident, that is something that concerns me. So other people had aired that concern, and I have the same thoughts about that.
Thank you for your comments. I believe that's everybody. Everybody has spoken, who wants to speak? So. Mr. Mr. Posuto?
One person, Rob Trotter is on his way, he would like to speak.
We're pretty much, we're closing, we're closing it out right now. Mr. Posuto?
Can he make any comment after?
All I, I just, no. All I want to say is, just very quickly, no one brought up anything that I didn't cover in our presentation, but I just wanted to point out that to the woman who lives at Country Point at Kings Park, there's no gatehouse at that entrance, that's a secondary entrance. The gatehouse is on Old Northport Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, then, I just want to, before I close the hearing, I just want to let you know that we're postponing issuing a recommendation to the town board until such time as the final environmental impact statement is, is here. So right now, then, I am going to move in a matter of zone change petition two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two Beechwood Smithtown LLC, I move that we close the hearing.
All right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The hearing is closed, and thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, then, and to resume the rest of our meeting. Okay, then, and to resume the rest of our meeting? Yeah. Okay, we, um... Can we just, everybody, can you please exit? We're going to continue the hearing, the meeting right now, please? Yes. Okay. Okay? Okay, is every, everybody here at the board ready for me to continue the meeting? Okay? I move that we adopt the minutes of the March 5, 2025 meeting of the planning board.
All right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted, and now I move to adjourn this meeting.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.